Just to have a drink or two. Caffertys, Dillows, McQuillens, McClearies, O'Learys, O'Haggardys, Kitty McGees, and double and turn upon the crawl. A hell of a time was had by all down where the beer and whiskey flew. We all went into Rafferty's pub for we're a jolly crew. We all went into Rafferty's just to have a drink or two. Rafferty's, Cafferty's, Dillows, McQuillens, McClearies, O'Learys, O'Haggardys, Kitty McGees, and double and turn upon the crawl. A hell of a time was had by all down where the beer and whiskey flew. We all went into Gilligan's pub for we're a jolly crew. We all went into Gilligan's just to have a drink or two. Gilligan's, Rafferty's, Cafferty's, Dillows, McQuillens, McClearies, O'Learys, O'Haggardys, Kitty McGees, and double and turn upon the crawl. A hell of a time was had by all down where the beer and whiskey flew. We all went into Milligan's pub for we're a jolly crew. We all went into Milligan's just to have a drink or two. Milligan's, Gilligan's, Rafferty's, Cafferty's, Dillows, McQuillens, McClearies, O'Learys, O'Haggardys, Kitty McGees, and double and turn upon the crawl. A hell of a time was had by all down where the beer and whiskey flew. We all went into Flanagan's pub for we're a jolly crew. We all went into Flanagan's just to have a drink or two. Flanagan's, Milligan's, Gilligan's, Rafferty's, Cafferty's, Dillows, McQuillens, McClearies, O'Learys, O'Haggardys, Kitty McGees, and double and turn upon the crawl. A hell of a time was had by all down where the beer and whiskey flew. We all went into Flanagan's pub for we're a jolly crew. We all went into Flanagan's for a final drink or two. Flanagan's, Flanagan's, Gilligan's, Gilligan's, Rafferty's, Cafferty's, Dillows, McQuillens, McClearies, O'Learys, O'Haggardys, Kitty McGees, and double and turn upon the crawl. A hell of a time was had by all down where the beer and whiskey flew.
We will go ahead and call to order the meeting of Sanford City Commission for Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty-five. First order of business is the legislative prayer by Pastor Bernard Johns of Connection Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this committed group of men and women who serve the community, who step forward and take upon the concerns and the desires of their fellow citizens, Lord. Let there be wisdom in their deliberations and let your will be done. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it's in, one nation under us, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. And then we have a business spotlight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Commission, I would like to turn to Economic Development Director Brady Wissad, and he has a very special guest in the business spotlight. Mr. Wissad.
Yes, thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. It is a pleasure to introduce this lady to you all tonight. And actually, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Ms. Holder and her new colleague, Nemo, are planning to take this to a different level. I said Nemo, I can't believe I just said it. Sorry, Nico. You know, it's actually...
Mr. Bonaparte, can he please have to stay after work every day this week?
It's actually appropriate that I called him Nemo instead of Nico. The first time I met Shara's husband, for about a forty-five minute meeting, I kept saying, hey, Kevin, hey, Kevin, trying to have the mnemonic device memory of his name. We walk him... It's her ex-boyfriend's name, and her husband's name's Devin. So, Kevin, hello. So, but honestly, many years ago, and we can't remember where it was, but I met Shara at an event, and I remembered it more vividly than her, if she even did, because at the time I had one friend from Trinidad. Now I have two friends from Trinidad, so...
Until you get her name wrong.
Yes, exactly. So, many of us know about the Sanford Brewing Company story. We were disappointed when they ran into some hurdles, and it was really kind of a blow to the community. It really was. I started hearing that Shara was potentially interested in this venture. So I reached out to her, started probably blowing up her phone more than she was interested in hearing from, but I was thrilled when she called and said, Brady, we've made the decision. I said, great, when do you close? She said, we just did. So I thought that was fantastic. So I wanted to get Shara to come here as our business spotlight, to tell you a little bit about her real career, I would say, prior to this venture, how her vision for her company, Brulando, looks and what those prospects are for the city of Sanford. So with that, I'd like to introduce Shara Pathic to you and turn it over to her.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you guys so much for having me here this evening. I've lived in Orlando for a long time, close to thirty years, and probably ventured out to Sanford maybe five times in that period of time. As Brady mentioned, Brulando actually is not, well, it was not, my primary business, but it's slowly becoming that. I'm actually in manufacturing. We manufacture ID wristbands in Orlando. Our operations are in Orange County, and we do wristbands for festivals and hotels and surgery centers. I'm sure everybody sitting here has worn our product at least one time. And we're also into software. We develop an in-house software platform that controls access and cashless purchasing. So I'm in a very, very different space in my everyday work compared to Brulando. But the Brulando story started because I had a tenant in a building, and they didn't make it after COVID. For as much as I tried to help them along, which I did, because I felt like the quality of the beer, and I'm not a huge beer drinker myself, but it was exceptionally good, and I felt like they had something special there. The unique story, they were funded by the Lutheran Church, and the Lutheran Church put quite a bit of money into that business until they just decided they didn't want to do it anymore. And at that time, it was the middle of December in twenty twenty-one, and when that happened, I was just going to close the doors and put the business in the hands of a broker and look for, you know, have him look for somebody else. And then my phone started blowing up with the employees who knew me, just kind of coming in there sometimes, but they knew that I was the landlord, and reached out to just kind of plea, you know, hey, we have nowhere to go. Do you know what's going to happen with this business? And I know nothing about brewing beer, well, at that time. And, you know, right before Christmas, I just thought, give me a week or so. I'm going to give you guys a little bit of a bonus from my pocket, just so you can get through Christmas. But I can't make any promises. I don't know the first thing about this business, but I need to prey on this and I need to think about this. And so I went to Tennessee that Christmas. And I walked into the house where we were staying, and there was a plaque that, that was the first thing that I saw in the house, and it talked about the man in the arena. I don't know if you've actually ever read that, but I read it, and I thought, oh, my goodness, like, this is like a sign. I probably have to do this. So I went back and I said, this is what I'm going to do. There is beer in the tanks. I will come to some kind of agreement, a settlement agreement, with the old owners, and they'll allow me to use their license. As long as you guys could sell enough beer to pay for your salaries, then I'll keep the doors open until I find somebody else. So the search was actually very active, trying to find someone else, another operator. And I told them, if they do a good job with this, then I'm sure that they'd land somewhere well, but it has to be run like a business. And I learned very quickly that the craft beer space is a passion business, and oftentimes it's not really run the way that a business is supposed to be run. So that was the first thing that we changed over there, and that was the deal, and that was how this started. So in that search, there was a big conglomerate from Trinidad, like Brady mentioned, I'm from Trinidad, and they wanted to expand their footprint into Central Florida. And they came and they looked at the facilities, and I met with them, and the numbers just were not making sense for me, so I bowed out of that opportunity. But in that exchange, I met their CEO, who was very well-connected in the craft brewing space, well, brewing in general. He worked for some big box places like Yingling. He had been with that company for fifteen years. I explained to him, you know, what I felt could be the vision for something like what I had in my hand, and I said, it doesn't have to be the same name, you know, I just renamed it so that we could continue doing business. But I think that there's good potential, and I think that there's something special here for the right people, but it also has to make sense for me. Long story short, six months later, he left them, and we decided that we were going to give this project a go. So that's where the story started, and there was a lot to iron out, just in terms of the structure of the business and how we wanted things done. And two years later, we had an opportunity at Icon Park to make some beer for them, and that led us to an opportunity to open a location on International Drive, which we did in October. And it wasn't even a month that that location had been open, and on the news, I saw that the Sanford Brewing Company was closing down. And just being in the industry, I thought, let me find out a little bit more about this. I heard that there was some debt to be paid, and that if they just sold a building in Sanford, they'd be able to do that, and so that's how all of this started. I did not intend to buy the entire thing, but as we went through the process and as we spoke to more people, it, you know, it slowly started making a lot of sense. And I have to admit, not being familiar with the city of Sanford and really not knowing anybody here, it was quite intimidating for me because I thought, you know, this could go really well, or it can go completely south. But with Brady's support and, you know, the assurance that there is a lot that the city has to offer, I'm now a believer. So that's the story of the brand. But what's interesting is, before I walked into this meeting, somebody sent me this, and I thought it was so perfect. It says, when you create a difference in someone's life, you not only impact their life, you impact everyone influenced by them throughout their entire lifetime. No act is ever too small. One by one, this is how to make an ocean rise. And that's how I feel about this brand, and that's how I feel about what we've done, and that's how I feel about what we're going to do here in Sanford. Because we also have a manufacturing facility at Sanford Brewing here, we have named this location as the innovation hub for the Brulando brand. So this is where all of the recipe creations and all of the fun stuff will happen, and we're highlighting that to really highlight the Sanford location for the brand. These are just some pictures. I'm not going to bore you to read the whole thing, but I asked Brady to share the slides with you all, and when you have some time, if you'd like to read it. It just talks about, you know, what we created in terms of how this was born, out of, you know, passion, perseverance, and, you know, and what it means to us. It's always been a brand for community, hence the name. So I feel like it ties very nicely into what is being done here in Sanford, and I feel like it's just a natural extension for growth for the brand. We're also going into making ciders, which have become a lot more popular in the last year or so, and that will all be also done out here in Sanford. And from our Sanford location, the distributor that we partnered with, which is FDC, which we've had a partnership with them before we came into Sanford, which is why we didn't use Wayne Dench, but the FDC actually really wanted to expand their footprint into the Volusian Brevard corridors, which they couldn't do because they just didn't have a brewery that they felt they could partner with to do that. And so this location in Sanford puts us right up into that corridor. So there's going to be quite a bit of manufacturing and distributing taking place from the Sanford Brulando location. This is just an example of how we market our beers. So we just recently got the award for, not award, for the Food and Wine Festival at Epcot. Japan chose Brulando to manufacture the Fuji Apple IP for this year's Food and Wine Festival. So this is how we typically would send out proposals. Apart from us being a craft brewery, we're, you know, we're obviously very sensitive to the way that things should be put together, and again, tying into just it being a business and it being positioned that way. This is just a list of all of the beers. We manufacture twenty-three different kinds of beers at Brulando. And with the acquisition of the Sanford Brewing Company, the brand is now Central Florida's largest brewery, which I really did not expect. So, yes, so that's it. I really appreciate you guys having me here, and we're excited about all the things that we're going to do. I do want to let you know that we actually plan to open the doors this Saturday.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And that got delayed a little bit because of our four COP license. The way that, just because we have four locations, we need to make sure that our documentation is straight and our licensing is straight, and we're doing everything the way that we need to do it. So we have a little bit of a delay with the four COP, which means that we just won't be serving alcohol when we open the doors, but we'll be serving all of our beer, wines, and the kitchen will be open. So we're aiming for that this Saturday. That is hoping that we pass the inspection tomorrow for the kitchen, which we were optimistically hopeful that that's going to happen without any issues. And then on Friday, which is the day before we open, I'm going to send an invitation to Brady, which he will send out to you guys. We were just going to do a very private friends and family reception, and we've changed a little bit of things inside of the space. We had quite a bit of cleaning to do, and so I hope that most of you will be able to make it on Friday. But thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you for coming.
I'm already very positive that this is going to be successful because she was smart enough not to tell you she was closing until after she actually closed. She already knew you.
Brady, and this was excellent because it's Women's History Month, and I'm glad to see a woman in business. Love it.
I only saw two ciders on the menu, though. I want to see more.
Yes, we are. And actually, so the elderberry one is the most popular, but we don't make that ourselves, but that's going to be the first flavor that we make, because then we're going to pair on it.
Excellent.
When we're doing that, when we have these test glasses, I'll send them out to Brady, and you guys can come and try it.
Are you saying Brady's there a lot?
Also, we have put in for a trademark for Sanford's, so that's going to be the brand that we tie into Sanford. So we really want to make it something special, even though it's still going to be another different Brulando brand, there's going to be something very special that's tied to be a Sanford brand.
Excellent. Wonderful.
Thank you.
So to facilitate public input, if you plan to speak on an item, please complete one of the yellow Citizens' Input Forms at the rear and place it in the tray there. We also ask that you state your name and address for the record before speaking. The public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before the City Commission during regular meetings, including the consent agenda. We don't have any public hearings tonight. During regular items, if you have not filled out one of the forms, and when we get to an item, if you would raise your hand to be recognized, we will allow you to speak at that time. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker on each item, except the person representing an organization presenting it, but use your own quasidisciplinary. At citizen participation, which is before regular items, individuals may address the commission on any topic that is not on the agenda, and there is a five-minute time limit for those comments. First order of business for the commission is the minutes of the February eighth, February ten, and February twenty-four meetings?
I have a couple of corrections, Mayor. In the Goals and Work Session, February eighth minutes, I just want to clarify, when we're talking about the opportunities for the community, it kind of paraphrases and says that Commissioner Britton says that Sanford needs to stop making it comfortable for the homeless people. Please, I don't want that to be stated. The statement was for the chronic and chronic homeless, and that we don't need to be the hub for all of the public services. It also says further down, Commissioner Britton suggested stocking the food pantries in the Sanford schools rather than handing out food with the picnic project. That's incorrect. It should state, Commissioner Britton stated that we should stock the Seminole County Public Schools' pantries instead of organizations doing it on their own. It's nothing about the not working with the picnic project or saying that we should do it instead of the picnic project. It was just saying, if organizations wanted to do something, that was an opportunity to work with Seminole County Public Schools, not in lieu of the picnic project. So I just wanted to correct that.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Move to approve.
As amended.
Yes.
Motion seconded for a discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Pastor Nastly, is there anyone in the audience which is to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda? Anyone bringing to motion for consent A through L? Motion seconded, all in favor? Pastor Nastly, that we don't have any public hearings, so that brings us to citizen participation. Is there anyone who knows which to speak to the commission? The no one will move on to other items, and I may approve a pre-annexation agreement. Mr. Bonaparte.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Commission, city staff have reviewed the request for annexation and found the request to meet the criteria set forth in the Florida statutes relating to voluntary annexation. The property boundaries are contiguous to the city's boundaries and reasonably compact. It is therefore the city staff recommendation. City Commission approved the pre-annexation agreement as proposed.
Questions or motion?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Pastor Nastly, budget transfer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Commission, city staff is requesting City Commission approval for budget transfer in the amount of two-hundred-and-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-six twenty-six dollars to reallocate funds from the project code WW nineteen oh five to project code WW twenty-five oh two and increase the purchase order number forty-five-four-five in the amount of sixty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-five dollars with a new balance for the purchase order of three-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, four-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars for Cosodo Way Project.
Questions or motion? Motion seconded for a discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Pastor Nastly, purchase order four oh one seven three, Mr. Bonaparte.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Commission, city staff is requesting City Commission approval for an increase in purchase order forty-one-seven-three to Roland D E LLC for manhole rehabilitation repair maintenance work in the amount of one million dollars with a new total of one million four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and this is something that will continually be added to until we get to the five-point-five million, right? Okay. Questions or motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Pastor Nastly, engaging Donaldson, Beerman, Caldwell.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Commission, city staff is requesting the approval procurement for disaster recovery and government services from Donaldson, Beerman, Caldwell, and Briswell relating to issues arising from the interactions with the federal emergency management agencies pertaining to Sanford Downtown Marina. This is an agency we'd like to engage to help us with FEMA reimbursement.
Mr. Britton.
What actually, what's happening here? Explain to me what we're doing.
Good evening. Craig Radzak, Assistant City Manager. A little bit of background, we requested a meeting with FEMA because we had some delays in the request for reimbursement for the marina repairs. Has been sitting stagnant in the portal, FEMA's portal, for six to eight months. So we had the meeting with FEMA probably about a month ago, and in that meeting, they basically said that they would like to do another site visit, which we did within six months after Ian. So essentially, what they told us is they want to start over. Now, when we did the initial site visit, they spent a day and a half down there, and then they were thrown in terms like deferred maintenance, sixty-two-year-old marina, so which caught us off guard a little bit. So in order to assist with FEMA reimbursement, we thought it'd be a good idea to hire this firm that specializes in FEMA claims. Chris has made a couple of phone calls to other cities that have used them, and it's mostly an investment in our part to spend some money and get more reimbursement. We think what's happening is FEMA is probably going to come back and offer us lower than the eighteen million that we've requested for claims. So this firm would specialize in FEMA claims and help us with reimbursement.
Okay, and then it says something about, like, our legal expenses, we may recoup those? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Didn't we already have another group helping us get reimbursed with FEMA?
We have FEMA consultants that are on board that help us with all kinds of debris recovery and marina. This is one of the biggest projects that we have for the FEMA consultant we have on board now. So they're part of the team, and then this firm will be part of the team as well. So actually, the FEMA consultant has been providing us advice to set up the meeting, and this usually doesn't happen so slow, so they kind of pushed us along to have this meeting with FEMA, which was a kind of disappointing and concerning meeting, and that's what really sparked this, engaging this firm.
But the consultant we have on board now is mainly reporting, not advocating?
Both.
Is that correct?
They help with documentation, reporting, and provide advice on, because a lot of the consultant we have on board, a lot of them were ex-FEMA employees, and they've been around, a lot of them worked Katrina and other disasters, so they know the process, they know the inner workings of FEMA, and they provide some guidance. So they'll be part of the team along with the firm, too. They'll still be engaged with us.
So I know we're looking at getting, you know, a nice amount of reimbursement, but their hourly rates are really expensive, you know, six hundred dollars an hour. Do we know how much this, it's going to cost for them to advocate for?
No, there's no retainer fees. That's good news. I know our Assistant City Attorney has talked to the firm. I haven't talked to him yet, but I think it's going to kind of be one of those one-four dioxane, it's going to be depending on how much we use them, and we'll be prudent with our monies with that. If we don't need to use them, we won't use them, but in case we have to, we'll have to engage them. And that's the top hourly rate. That's the attorney six hundred, and it scales down from there. I think the lowest is probably a hundred and something, but it's still pretty high.
Okay. That's it for me.
Can we at least get some reporting on how much we are paying as this goes along?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just so we're not surprised?
Certainly not taken lightly whatsoever, but I understand they're the best in the nation. I had a great conversation with the firm, so did Lonnie. I talked to other city managers and their workings with them, and it's been excellent return. They were able to recruit in the city of Seneca in South Carolina, four hundred thousand administrative fee, their fee for Baker Donaldson was one fifty. They recovered ninety-eight percent, so it's a really good, you know, I believe FEMA, you know, we certainly touted them when they put their boots on the ground. We put them on the front cover of the paper. They were kind of, we were kind of taken aback by the meeting. It was a little surprising. One of their persons, they're, well, they're not here now. Well, that's neither here nor there. We're damaged. We are recouping legitimate funds from Hurricane Ian that hit us on September twenty-eighth in twenty twenty-two. After two and a half years of being in the application process, and we were told in December, you're moving on great, your application is doing fantastic, we felt this was going to be basically a kumbaya meeting, and we were blindsided. Not sure what's going on with FEMA this time, but those funds need to be spent on economic repair of our city. We were extremely damaged. We're eighty-three days away from hurricane season. You know, we suffered an EF two, almost hit Sanford today. So, you know, we need... So, you know, we need to recover these funds.
Right, I agree.
And, you know, I'm very, very confident, I had great conversations and, um, I did not tell, uh, you know, Lonnie or Craig otherwise, had a great, great conversation, I feel very confident. We need to receive a certain amount of funds so we can legitimately repair that marina back to its standards, so we can get back on our feet. So we need to recover a certain amount, percentage of those funds, or it's going to be very difficult for the city to be able to find a capital improvement rocket down the road.
And, and we checked the Seneca experience where the consultant got Seneca about four or five times with the FEMA originally offered, as I recall. And the rates that they were charged are the same rates that we're, we're being charged.
Okay.
FEMA's underoperated, you know, it's just kind of puzzling to us, but here we are.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pastor Nansley. Procurement from Dell.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission. City staff is requesting the Commission approval for procurement relating to purchase of police department laptops, computers, and accessories. And this is in the amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Questions or motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Pastor Nansley. Resolution, excuse me, thirty-three fifty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. City staff is requesting City Commission approval, resolution thirty-three fifty-eight, to amend the budgetary actions relating to the grant termination of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, South Sanford wastewater treatment facility, B N, B N R improvements for the nutrient reduction and protection of Lake Monroe and Lake Jessup Grant.
Questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pastor Nansley. Resolution thirty-three fifty-nine.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission. City staff is requesting Commission approval of resolution thirty-three fifty-nine to amend the budget and procurement to Inside Public Inc. The police department will pay forty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents from impact fees, to purchase ticket printers and accessories with subsequent expenses paid from the department's operating budget.
Questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pastor Nansley. Resolution thirty-three sixty.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. City staff is requesting the City Commission approve resolution thirty-three sixty, amending the budget in the amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, to purchase an F three five zero twenty-five, twenty twenty-five Ford Super Duty truck for the police department. And these funds will come from the police department's impact fee account.
Questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
Quick question, assume that, uh, Super Duty is necessary for the truck?
Yeah, it's the fully, uh, trailer that, uh,
That has the really heavy barricade.
Has the capacity to do so?
Yes.
I don't question the police department.
I move to approve.
Oh, I didn't notice he, he's gone into being a pastor now. I didn't even notice.
So we have a motion and a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pastor Nansley. Resolution thirty-three sixty-one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission. City staff is requesting Commission approval, resolution thirty-three sixty-one, urging and encouraging the Florida legislature to oppose and defeat legislation currently Senate Bill four eight two and House Bill six six five, which would prohibit cities and counties from, as a condition of processing or issuing a development permit or development order, requiring an applicant for development activity to install a work of art, pay a fee for a work of art, or reimburse the local government for any costs that the local government may incur relating to a work of art.
Okay, questions or motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Pastor Nansley.
We're going to change that to note, to provide a copy to all the chairs, committee chairs too.
Yes.
And budget transfer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission. City staff is requesting Commission approval of budget transfer in the amount of six hundred and ten thousand dollars, and associated procurement activity in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars, for lift station communications equipment from Hydro Services.
Questions or motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pastor Nansley, resolution thirty-three sixty-two.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission. City staff is requesting City Commission approve resolution thirty-three sixty-two, urging and encouraging the Florida legislature to oppose and defeat legislation currently Senate Bill four twenty and House Bill fifteen seventy-one, which among other things would prohibit the City Commission from taking any official actions, including but not limited to adoption of ordinances, resolutions, rules, or regulations, programs, or policies relating to diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Move to approve.
Second.
And this one also be more widely distributed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pastor Nansley. And then we also wanted to approve, uh, similar resolution opposing House Bill three oh one.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pastor Nansley. Princess City Attorney's report?
Nothing to do with this, right?
City Clerk's report?
I do have agendas here if you'd like them tonight for Monday, the seventeenth, for the city attorney's selection. We are having that upstairs in the railroad depot room. Also, I received Central Florida Expressway, they have two upcoming meetings. I did see, I received this in the mail today, but I also received one email when I went back upstairs for dinner. So you may have this as well.
Okay.
They'll be holding two meetings. And I received a thank you card from the zoo for our Asian Lantern Festival, with a copy of the lanterns that we slaughtered, if anybody would like to see those as well.
Great. Following up on the expressway authority, I don't know if you have seen, they've eliminated two options, and modified one of them to be a little bit different, and it really is a little bit different. But that's why they're going back to another public meeting, because there's a new alignment.
It will be Wednesday, April second, you can do in person or online.
Yeah, we have put copies of that in your, each individual mailbox.
Can someone make sure they send me the, the latest? Please. She has it.
Yeah.
A copy of it, right?
Yeah, you can have this one.
Well, okay.
Because I have an email copy as well.
I will, I will, can you send me the email? Please send the email.
I've also sent you an email while I was upstairs during the break of the resignations of each board.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. When you, when you said that, Mayor, you made a face that it really is a little bit different. Can you expand?
The two that they are still looking at are the ones that go, both of them go in that narrow gap between, um, not when to preserve, but the other one. Kim's place and the newest one. One of them comes off a little further down four seventeen, before it cuts over and connects to that. I would have to look at it to really understand the, the bit of difference. I think it's a shorter road route, but it may have, um, I think it impacts a historic home. So.
Couple options down, two to go.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
All right. City manager's report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we received a request for a change of time from Pints and Paws, I'd like Ms. Hold this Jones to, um, explain it.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Uh, last week, we received notice from the business owners, um, and applicant for Pints and Paws, which is scheduled for March twenty-ninth. Their original application was approved for street closures from eight AM to nine PM, with the event hours from noon to six. Uh, upon some further investigation and seeing some promotions, we realized that they were actually promoting the event from eleven AM to seven PM. That would not affect the street closure times, but it does affect the hours of operation. So we wanted to bring that back to your attention and, uh, for discussion or approval.
The music would stop at seven?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Street closures would remain until nine.
No problem.
That's still early enough, right?
Yeah.
Move to approve.
No change to the.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay, do we need to, a motion to approve that?
I believe so.
Okay. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
Nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Britton.
I was going to say it at the work session, but I wanted to say it publicly. I wanted to congratulate, um, our city employee, Britton Henderson, and our city commissioner, um, Carrie Wiggins, on a very successful gala. Although it is not a city government-related event, it is an organization that benefits the people of Sanford, and I was very impressed and, um, happy to be in attendance to that. So kudos, good job, Commissioner Wiggins.
Thank you.
Earlier in the year, I, I told the commission that I will not be doing the back-to-school event for the, the teachers, which is the District One large event, and I'm keeping my word on that. Uh, my community partnership is with, um, the school in my district, Hamilton Elementary School. I will be the speaker and emcee at, um, their event, their vision event for, uh, the girls and their mothers. And I would like to sponsor the T-shirts for, uh, that event at Hamilton Elementary School. Um, it is in the amount of thirteen hundred dollars for a public purpose. So I am asking the commission for a motion, um, for those funds taken from the District One account.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor? Any opposed? Pastor Nansley.
Thank you, um, um, members of the commission. Um, I spoke, uh, at the work session about the cultural guild, um, uh, that Commissioner Thomas and I both attended. I just want to briefly, on the record, say that I'm really excited about the future of the possibility of the botanical gardens. And to let those know who are watching, that I did ask for the guild to come and do a presentation alongside the CRA to the city, um, commission. And publicly, I'd like to thank Brady, Pam, Jerry, and, um, Brigitte, um, for all that they're doing, um, to see that come to fruition. A couple of things I want to address. The zoo, um, lantern advertisements on Seminole Boulevard are still up. That event was over in January, so I don't know, I know that, uh, our Public Works is responsible for taking those down. But when you ride down Seminole Boulevard, it looks like it's, uh, an event that's still happening. So I'm wondering when are we taking tho- those flags down? I don't have to have it right now, but that's something that we should address. I requested at the beginning of the year, a log sheet regarding the trash. The commission approved a, um, an employee that was to, you know, solely pick up trash. I haven't heard anything about that. Um, I was adamant about that employee not being on a crew. Uh, the commission asked for that, for that employee to pick up trash. We have four weeks in a month, four working days out of the week, that should not just be dedicated to District One, but to all four districts. And I have not seen, um, that like I would have liked to see. When I do my own picking up trash in my district, I pick up two bags of trash. So there should be, you know, I, there should be some kind of log showing how, how that trash is used, especially, uh, is, is being picked up. Especially because a lot of our residents were complaining about the amount of litter that we have, um, in specific areas. So I requested that, I haven't seen it, and I've heard that it's, um, that employee may be moved to a, um, a crew, and that's not what we asked for. I am going to ask for the commission to please give me thirty seconds of respectful uninterrupted time. It is so important that we treat others how we would like to be treated. And my thirty seconds are starting right now. I don't need to go any longer. This is from District One, Commissioner Britton. Staring at someone for an extended period of time is considered disrespectful. Especially if I have informed that individual that it makes people feel uncomfortable, judged, or scrutinized. I feel and have been told that it has been used as an intimidation form of management. I am offended, it is inappropriate behavior, I do not condone it. I've witnessed it being done to employees, and it has been done to me. I had my one-on-one with the city manager, and I asked for our meetings to be recorded, and also a staff member to attend there. I had serious issues with, uh, employees not being able to freely come to the, the city of Sanford when they have issues. There was a matter that was brought before HR regarding abuse of supervisory roles. And I asked the city manager to please look into that, to follow up, because, uh, employees felt uncomfortable because a staff member allegedly had asked them for money and did not return it. And I have explained to city staff that they need to follow protocol, because honestly, I do not feel that I can help. But we do have a city manager, we do have human resources, and the process that they went through was very poor. Uh, they were called in, a recorder was shoved in front of their face. The whole process went to where the accused supervisor knew what was going on, and people felt like there was an error of retaliation. My response is, is we need to treat others how we would like to be treated. I addressed that with the city manager, and I've done it over and over again. Because if we don't have, we don't have a city government, if we do not have city employees, and we must always treat others how we want to be treated. I was stared at after I made my ending statement to Mr. Bonaparte. I've asked Mr. Bonaparte in one-on-one meetings before to not do that, because it is intimidating, and it is a tactic that he uses. He may not do it with you all, but it has been done to me. I am exhausted with it. I've said that it's been disrespectful, I've watched him to do it to Public Works, I've been in meetings with business owners, and he's done the same thing. It is inappropriate, it is unfair, and I do not like it. So this is my verbal reprimand, and I will be writing a written reprimand to give to all of you regarding this behavior. That concludes the District One report.
Commissioner, if I could?
You sure can.
Commissioner, we were in a meeting, and you were talking, and then you became quiet, and I was looking at you.
But, and after that meeting was over, after that brief, that thirty, forty-minute stare, because it was longer than that, did it require for you to stare at me that long? Because we had talked plenty of times before that. You do that, in my opinion, as an intimidation, and it is unfair. And I've told you about that in one-on-ones before. I've told you that with other business owners, that it has been done. There is a difference between pausing and waiting for me to finish, because I put my head down as well to let you know that I was done with my comment. And then I looked up and you were still staring. There was another employee that was in there too, and it has been recorded. It is not fair, and it is inappropriate.
You say stare.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Yes.
You had finished, I was looking at you to see what else you were going to say.
And you knew that I was done.
Well, I mean, I'm confused.
Let me help you.
Are we not supposed to?
Yes.
So I'm supposed to look out here while I'm talking to you?
No, there is a difference, Art, and don't, 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 don't do that. Because there's a difference between me looking at you and then me staring at you in an intimidation as to saying, are you done? Was what you're saying is, is valid? Because that's why I asked you all for thirty seconds of your time, and I sat, I did not raise my eyebrows, I did not look at you incorrectly, incorrectly. I just stared. We are adults. It, I have seen it being done to staff, and it is inappropriate. I've been in meetings with, for some reason, whenever I address things that need to be addressed, it is always, we just, we, we don't know where that's coming from. And the only reason I'm bringing it up to the commission is because I cannot pick up the telephone and call you and tell you how this happened. I'm tired of it. I've said it before, so it should not be done. Our city employees can go, there's an open door policy, and they've experienced the same thing. Our city employees can go, there's an open door policy, and they've experienced the same thing. It is not fair. I've sat in a, a, outside of public works when Mr. Bonaparte talked to the public works department. I wanted to speak to them regarding their director. When, when he was just done, he sat there, they asked questions, he stood on the back of the, the, the chair and just stared. I am not making, just trying to find issues. There is a problem that we have here, and it needs to be addressed. And I've already said plenty of times before that that is inappropriate. It is not fair. And I'm not, I'm not an employee, so I'm not, you, you, you cannot intimidate me like that, and I, but I want it to stop.
Okay. But I'm not sure there's a method for an individual commissioner to reprimand the city manager.
Well, we can, we can start it today.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, from a total legal perspective, there is absolutely no ability to do that whatsoever under any way, shape, or form for an individual commissioner to publicly reprimand the city manager. And as far as I've ever experienced, I've never seen that in any city charter or county charter. And to be totally fair to Mr. Bonaparte, I think that needs to be stricken from the record by the, the rest of you. One commissioner can vote against that, obviously, because it's not fair to Mr. Bonaparte or any other city manager to have that stated, because he would have to, if he was ever asked in the future, have you ever been reprimanded, he would have to say yes. But if you nullify it, the answer would be no. Does that make sense?
No, sir, it does not.
Well, that's my legal.
Unless if you can show me legally, Mr. Groot, where it cannot be done, then do not say that it cannot be done. Now, you should send me the email and tell me where it cannot be done. The reason why it has to be brought before the commission is because I cannot have private conversations. When I bring these issues up, when we're having the evaluations, I don't have anything to stand on. This is something that is being brought to my, brought to, uh, the commission's attention, because we do not have private conversations. Mr. Bonaparte works at the will of the commission, and I am letting the commission know that I am dissatisfied. So until you can bring it to me, to tell me that legally we cannot do that, I don't care if it has not been done before, sir.
Legally, you could not do that, and I don't want to argue with the commissioner, Mr. Mayor, but legally, she cannot do that. And, and, but yet it stands as a public statement now, and I think it needs to be.
But it can be stricken at the next meeting, right?
It could be stricken at the next meeting or any other appropriate time. Yes, sir.
Okay.
But that's what you think. Please bring it to me that says it is required to be restricted. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner O'Gins.
I just, uh, I know I said it earlier, since we, uh, have some more people, just wanted to, uh, again, thank staff, uh, and the support of you guys last week on Thursday with my commission, my community meeting, and again, Mr. Henderson, Britt Henderson, and, uh, Mr. Josh Brown, we're honored by the Zetas, uh, for the work they do over at Westside. And then on Friday, again, with Picnic Project, we were over in, uh, Seminole Gardens, and we, uh, fed about fifty to sixty families groceries. And then on Saturday, uh, over at the Dr. Velveld West, uh, Westside Center, we, um, had my third annual community event, and, uh, we had hundreds of folks come through, um, all ages, from the, even the senior citizens, we're in there playing bingo. Uh, we had numerous folks out, and so we had a great time. So, again, thank you all for your support. And, uh, again, it's been one of, part you coming out with us, supporting the cause as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross.
Lovely.
Commissioner Thomas.
Uh, I did attend the Central Florida Indian Community Spring Mella event, which was wonderful. It was at Bentley Elementary, and a larger community than I realized we even had. This, uh, organization provides school supplies, clothing, shoes, hygiene items, groceries. They apparently do a lot in the community, and I hope to have more interactions with them in the future. If any of you thought I had a disease on my hand, it's not, it's henna, what's left of it from that. And, uh, the only other thing is just maybe a hypothetical question. Because we only can do certain things in public and not, as Commissioner was saying, discuss things privately. If hypothetically, I wanted to say, raise a concern that I wasn't happy with Tracy's work, because she's terrible. I'm just kidding, it's hypothetical. But, um, is this the appropriate forum to do that, just to get it on record that I'm dissatisfied, or?
Well, it, it, is it a lawful forum? Yes. If you wanted to say, I'm tired of your legal advice, and I think your legal advice is horrible, and, and I really think that the city commission should fire you, Mr. Groot, you're absolutely positively to say that.
Okay.
Right, you have the positive right to say that.
And then go on.
If you say, however, Mr. Groot, I, I'm a commissioner, and I'm gonna reprimand you for this legal opinion, you have absolutely no right to say that. Only, the commission has the right to say that, because I work for the commission. Mr. Bonaparte, last I heard, you worked for the commission, and the commission can, I'm not sure you actually can, you can fire me. You can fire Mr. Bonaparte. I'm not sure you have the right to reprimand this. You can say whatever you want to about the performance, which in, in essence is a reprimand, but to say, I, to point your finger at me and say, I reprimand you,
Okay.
that doesn't, that, that's, you have no right to this.
And yet I could come here and say, I wanna fire you.
You can, absolutely.
Well, that's interesting.
Which is a reprimand, but whatever.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Um. I had one more thing. We had talked about, um, Main Street and Dan's position and funding. I did meet with Main Street Board and shared with them concerns about overall funding and their lack of financial support of their, of their organization. I then met with Paul Williams and Alex Williams, um, separately, and talked to them, um, about a path going forward. And so I am waiting on, um, Dan to provide me with basically the ask, and for Paul to provide basically a framework of what they expect to do, and when I have that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Yeah, sure.
All right, and with that, we are adjourned.